Okay, I would like to get my microphone where it needs to be. Now, I would like to call to order the Holly Township Planning Commission meeting for February 5th, 2019. I almost caught myself because that says 18. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Tony Hingleburg.
Here.
Ray Curtin.
Here.
Lloyd Curtin.
Here.
Glenn Mitchell.
Present.
Kathy.
Here.
E.T.R.
Here.
Stacy Shet.
Here.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve today's agenda?
I approve, I have a motion to approve today's agenda.
And I support.
Okay, I have a motion by Lloyd, support by Stacy to approve the agenda. The only comment I've got is up right at the top, should be 2019 instead of 18. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, public comment for items on the agenda only. Members of the public can address the board for three minutes. That time can be extended by an additional three minutes upon support of the board to do so. If you're going to speak, please state your name and address for the record. If anybody would like to speak for public comment, please step up. Going once, going twice. Hearing none, we will move on. Public hearings, we have none. So, we will approve, move on to approval of the minutes for our January 15th, 2019. Can I get a motion to approve? Well, I will make the motion to approve the minutes. All right. So, you have a motion by me and a support by Glenn to approve the minutes. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I sent you an email. I don't know if you got it regarding the minutes?
I did.
Okay, so you didn't see anything wrong with any of this?
Well, I was waiting for you since you had brought it up to...
No one saw any typos or anything in the minutes.
Go ahead and...
That's interesting. First one was there was a motion made. I just got these in the mail this morning for some reason. Opened the public hearing, less than changes were made since I've talked to you. One second. Opened the public hearing, closed the public hearing. I made a motion, okay, on page three. It says Commissioner Steckly was nominated as Vice Chair for the upcoming term. Commissioner Henry made a motion to approve Tony Hingleburg as Chairman. Okay, then now below it says Commissioner Henry made a motion to approve Tony Hingleburg as Chairman of the Planning Commission. You see it's twice, I'm not...
Looks like it's all three, so...
Yeah, I'm not sure what's going on there.
Everybody want to get in?
He's been chairman for three years.
I object. Wait a minute, I don't think I can do that.
That's already logged on.
So, I think it looks like what just happened was the...
You're going to be Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary.
No, declined.
Declined.
So, what's the, I don't know who made the motions for each of those. I made the first motion, I agree with that one.
To nominate him.
Right, I see what you're saying, obviously what you're saying.
If anyone, well, I guess we can look at the YouTube since we do have it on YouTube.
I do have down here, Stacy made the first motion for Tony. I seconded it.
Right.
Lloyd did the second for Vice President and...
Stacy did the last one for Vice Chair.
And I did the one for Ray. So, it's not...
And Stacy did the second.
Me for the second one, and it's not Tony as Chair for the second one.
I have you for both of them.
You got me for both what?
Stacy and Ray.
Well, the way it still says her Chair.
So, we need to change the second one to Stacy, my motion. Commissioner Henry made a motion to approve Stacy.
As Vice Chair.
Probably nobody saw this, though. I don't know even the reason.
No, I saw, but like I said, when you sent the email, I figured when it came time for discussion that I wasn't going to steal your thunder to...
That's not thunder I'm looking for. And then the second one, I guess, would be I made the motion to approve Ray Curtin.
Yep.
As...
Secretary.
Secretary.
Yep, Stacy second.
And Stacy second.
Okay, so everybody's got clarification on those three motions. The other part wasn't. Looking at the video just as a backup to make sure I wasn't incorrect. Before we adjourned, I made comments regarding Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday holiday coming up on the following Monday, which would have been before adjournment. You can hear it if you watch the video, but I'm just curious on why it's not on here, my comments. I don't have the word for word, so the correct wording can come off of the YouTube video.
At least aren't words for word.
Right, I know, but you think for a federal holiday, Martin Luther King's birthday, if it was mentioned during a meeting, you would think it would be in the minutes. It's a federal holiday. I know a lot of places in Holly don't celebrate the holiday, don't realize it's a federal holiday, but I think it should be in the minutes if I mentioned it. Does anyone disagree with you?
I think that's fine.
So, I'd like the minutes to reflect that.
Do we need to make a motion to amend or...
Yeah.
Or do we want to make a mo...
Well, we had a motion, I guess, well, it was seconded too, right?
It was, it was seconded.
Or made the correction.
So, who made the motion?
You did.
You did.
I did make the motion, okay.
You made the motion.
So, I will amend my motion. Are you, do you have anything else, or...
Well, I'm just saying, you made the motion.
Well, no.
You didn't want to steal my thunder, but yet you made the motion.
Well, to get, to get the discussion going.
Okay.
That's procedure.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments, questions?
I would say that maybe it would be a good idea if we could have the revised minutes reviewed once, maybe at next...
I would agree to that.
I think that would maybe be better.
Okay.
Way to handle it, that way there's not any discrepancies.
And we can share, do copy then to vote on.
Yeah, it makes sense, that way we're all on the same page.
Okay. Well, then I will withdraw my motion for approval.
Then we can make a motion to table until they're back to us?
Yeah, yep.
I'll make the motion to table the minutes until next meeting when they're represented with corrections.
I will support that. Okay, so we have a motion by Lloyd, support by myself to table approval of the previous month's minutes until next meeting. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Communications, we have none this month, so we will move on to old business number one, the blight ordinance regarding dumpsters.
So, at last Planning Commission meeting, we started to talk about what standards we wanted for commercial dumpster enclosures, and I know Amy was doing some research from other communities. I talked to her briefly about it today, but I think there's, you know, a couple of different ways we could go with it. I mean, there's the standard approach, which I think Mike laid out in a previous memo, and that reflects the similar standards that villages in Holly have, and that's what you find in most, you know, most communities these days. You know, concrete pad, three sides of Masonry enclosure, and a gate on the, on the front side. That's standard operating procedure in probably 75% of the communities. But then we had an interesting situation come up today, actually. We had an applicant who was interested in doing a farm stand at the corner of Grange Hall and Fish Lake Road, and they had this vision in their mind that it wasn't going to look like a strip center, right? It wasn't going to look like a typical commercial business that you would find in, in Lion Township or in Farmington Hills or something like that. They wanted it to really truly reflect the rural character that we have in, in Holly Township. And to that end, I don't think the standard operating procedure of a one-size-fits-all dumpster ordinance really fits what we want to achieve. It may be appropriate in some districts in, in the township, but not in all the districts. So, I think we need to come up with an approach that's, that gives the township a little more latitude in terms of how to handle these kind of things, and so I guess that's my long-winded way of saying we're still looking into options that would give us that flexibility to have a rural approach consistent with the image that we're looking for in, in the township as well as some other standards as well. Now, the other issue that we talked about at length is what do we do with these existing businesses that don't have these? And there's a number of different approaches. Some communities will give, give these businesses a number, a period of time to come into compliance, so it's not a hardship to do it right off the bat, and so that they're not in a situation of being non-compliant. So, there's some remedies that we can put into place that would allow us to phase this in over time. So, I think those are the things that, you know, I'm going to be talking to Amy a little bit about and prepare to give a more detailed presentation at the next meeting.
John, I just had a quick question on the one you were speaking of with the stand. Was that going to be a year-round or was it permanent? So, they're looking at that corner as being a per, okay, not just seasonal?
So, it's really a cool, not, not to go too far down the rabbit hole on this, but it's really cool. It's a nice couple, and they, they really are committed to the farm-to-table experience and things like that. But they're, they're also sort of a startup business, so they don't have the money that Fresh Time has to come out and build a big building right off the bat, so they need to sort of...
Well, I was just thinking if it was going to be a seasonal one, I thought, oh, well, that's something we could deal with.
It may start that way. It may very well start that way, yeah.
And they're the ones that have been out there, I'm going to assume that have been out, okay. Thank you. Stacy?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, are they the people that were there last year? Because I kind of assumed that that was a part of that strip mall, because that strip mall's so close, so in that, in that case, I would think that they could use a dumpster and then...
Oh, actually, that's a bank, that's where it used to be. I don't know if it's still the bank property or not, or if they've sold that, but it, but it, yeah.
So, it's separate?
Right, yeah, it's separate, right.
Yeah, I kind of assumed like it's not.
Right, that's what I was wondering, I hadn't heard anything since they came before the board, Township Board, about some land acquisition to enlarge that property, so I was just kind of curious if that was the first thing that someone had come up with for that.
And the interesting thing, and I don't mind going on record and saying, I love the idea of having the farm stand there, I think it is an amazing entrance to our, to our community. That's actually technically not an ag district.
Right.
It doesn't mean, certainly doesn't mean they can't be there, but like when you were talking about as far as not making a one-size-fits-all thing for a dumpster, they are a, I don't know, I want to say a non-traditional use for that, for that area. I don't know if that's the right terminology, but it's a clear case why a one-size-fits-all approach is not probably something we'd want to do.
And again, I think if you look at the way we phrase the character of this intersection in the master plan, it talks about more of a hamlet or more of a informal kind of cluster of commercial buildings and not something like you'd see at any intersection in a suburban area. So, that's going to take a little creativity on our part with respect to our zoning ordinance, because of course our zoning ordinance is meant to protect the township and sets the standard at consistently high level, but, you know, we need to rethink that, make sure we're getting the results that we want to see out of the ordinance.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Well, is, could it be phrased, usually in ordinance, you say it has to be overall, but obviously there's always exceptions. Could these be suggestions instead of saying, this is what you have to do? Or, you know, I don't see a large commercial development not doing this, because it does, it's not practical for not doing that. But smaller businesses sometimes just either don't have the space we talked about to do some of this, or it could be very costly to do this, or like that sort of business, they could be spending $5,000 or $10,000 to comply with these rules. And I don't want to do it just for one place, we should make it so it's flexible for other people as well.
For sure. That's definitely one approach, we could, we could set the bar at, you know, at a certain level and then build in some discretion that the Planning Commission or staff would have as, as, you know, they come across these things. But when you have discretion, you still have to provide some standards by which they can apply to...
Well, so it's called suggestions instead of saying, this is what you have to do, and then let them modify it to see, you know, if they, if we give approval or something, because most of these are going to have site plans, right, anyway, that we would be looking at.
But at that point...
Unless they're existing.
Right, but you have to have a floor to start on. I mean, there has to be, I think what John said, there has to, we have to set some minimal standards that they have to follow, and then best practices, I think, is a better way of, of phrasing what you're talking about, but...
Why put anything on the books if we're suggesting something? At that point, it's just put together.
But to your point, if someone did come in with a brand-new spanking development, we would definitely want them to adhere to the higher standard. So, I think there's a way to put the standard in high and then have some discretion built into it, but with, with criteria, because without criteria, it's going to be arbitrary.
This is what should be for a large commercial development, but if you can show otherwise, you know, that somehow there should be exceptions, we should be flexible to allow it.
I think we can work something in there like that.
But that would be a special permit too, wouldn't it? Couldn't they apply for a special?
Another time.
Like a special land use time? Yeah, or variance?
Anyway, another discussion, another time.
If they're trying to get something done, that's another month or two months by the time you go to a special and going through the board, and if you don't approve right away, you know, that can slow development down considerably if you have to do something like that.
Sure, no, I agree, just...
Anybody else? So, I just, we don't, no, we don't even have to do that, we'll just, we take no action and look forward to a further report next month. All right, moving on to old business number two, the amendment to Chapter 32 zoning, Article 4 supplementary regulations, Section 32-145, maintenance of animals to include chickens.
So, first of all, I apologize. I know you've been working with Mike on this ordinance for some time now, and I, I feel like I came in at the last minute, threw a wrench in the works, so I apologize for that, but, you know, I do want to make sure you're comfortable with the approach and make sure we get it right. So, basically, I said at the last meeting that we had a survey of what other communities are doing, and I think you've got that in your, in your package, so I, hopefully that provided some context for what we're talking about here. And as someone mentioned, that, you know, there's a wide range of approaches. And then the other thing that I mentioned at the last meeting was, we didn't want to necessarily start with the cap off, because it was hard to put the cap back on if it was in the zoning ordinance, because these uses would be non-conforming, and we couldn't, we couldn't stop them. You know, they'd be grandfather potentially for, for a long time. So, Tony actually came up with a suggestion of, can we put it in the general code of ordinances? For better or worse, he came up with this idea yesterday. So, I did some digging around, and there are a number of communities that do deal with this in the general code of ordinances. Now, the general code of ordinances is enforced by police power, and so it doesn't have to deal with the non-conformity issues that you have in the zoning ordinance, okay? So, it's two sets of ordinances that have different authority, different, different authorization by the state, and you don't have to deal with non-conformities if you have it in your general code of ordinances. So, I looked at the township's general code of ordinances, and there's already a section in the general code of ordinances that deals with animals. It deals primarily with dogs on leashes and things of vat nature, but it seemed like a logical place, and it seemed like a place where most communities did put their ordinances that dealt with chicken and other similar animals in their general code of ordinances. So, what, and I'd be giving you a great presentation right now on that screen if I could figure out how to get the computer to talk to the projector, but unfortunately, I can't. But simply, I, I took the Class III animal ordinance and put it into the general code of ordinances, okay? So, I just lifted it right out of the zoning ordinance and put it right into the general code of ordinances, pretty cut and dry. And then I'm suggesting we make a couple of other modifications to the chicken ordinance as well. Number one is the, the way that the last ordinance was, you couldn't have chickens or similar ordinances in the townships R1 and R2 single-family districts, and those districts have minimum lot sizes that are, you know, one acre, one and a half acres, okay? And it was my understanding that the intent was to allow the keeping of chicken and similar animals on residential property in the township.
Correct.
So, the first change I made was to include the R1 and R2 into the areas that you could have chickens. Does that sound acceptable to everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
Just for the record, for the public, a subdivision who has, that's like a bylaw that says you can't, they would still be able to supersede us, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and there, and the R1 and R2, most of that is not in subdivisions.
Right.
And you say Class III, you just say chickens as examples?
Yeah, exactly, Class III, yeah. So, then the, the next change that I'm suggesting is, and again, I sort of looked at what the village was doing as a cue, as well as these other communities that, that we have, and I said that for the first acre of land, you could have up to 10 chickens maximum on one acre of land. And, you know, the way I came up with that is, if you look at the village's ordinance, say allow, I think six chickens on their lots, and their lots are a quarter acre or less.
Correct.
So, you know, it, it's a multiplier of that, although it's not a direct multiplier of that, it's just an increased number. And then I said for every quarter acre above an acre, you could have an additional two chickens. So, basically, for every acre above that, you get eight more chickens. So, on a two-acre piece of property, you could have 18 chickens, and so on, and so on, and so on. So, you know, it's tied to the size of the property, which seems to be pretty standard procedure if you look at what other communities are doing.
John, if I'm, unless I'm reading this wrong, it looks like what you wrote here was one additional Class III animal for each full one-quarter acre.
Yeah, it does.
Am I...
Per quarter.
So, are you suggesting two or one?
I'm suggesting two, because I, you know, I think doing it in...
No, this reads...
Are we looking at some other document? This doesn't read that way.
Yeah, this, this, yeah, this is, was newly developed.
Okay, okay.
Newly revamped.
Okay, got you, continue.
We're doing this totally on the fly again.
Okay, okay.
I apologize.
No, you're good.
You know, I...
This is what the numbers were, we're working at.
Okay, continue, please.
Did you get up at 3:00 AM to put this together?
If you'd have called me at 3:00 AM, I'd have been more sorry. But, but, but anyway, so that's sort of the, the sliding scale that I, that I came up with, and then, that I'm suggesting for your consideration. And then the other, I, I did pilfer some other standards that were in the village's ordinance that I thought were appropriate, such as no outdoor slaughtering. So, you know, may seem like a no-brainer, but, you know, we better get it in there.
Did you address roosters at all? Was there a change to that?
I would suggest we exclude roosters.
Again, you're talking about in the smaller parcels?
Well, it's open for discussion. I think at a minimum on the smaller parcels, you don't want, you don't want roosters, but, you know, maybe when you get into the ag districts and things like that, maybe it's not that big of an issue, but I suspect it's an issue for discussion.
So, general ordinance as opposed to zoning, if there's a complaint, this would go to the police and not to our code enforcement officer, is that correct?
No, go to the code enforcement officer.
Would go to code enforcement too? Okay.
And there's no, okay, so if you banned roosters from one section, and can you divide it like that and still enforce? I mean, is that, have you seen that done elsewhere?
Yeah.
I don't want to be in the situation where someone says, well, you know, they do it, you know, they allow this elsewhere, and it's been challenged, or...
Right, you know, because it's in the general ordinances, I would say probably on lots that are less than two acres in size, you can't have roosters.
Okay, you think that would be held up, nobody could challenge that?
So, what age do you consider rooster? As when they're a day old, or a month old, or three months old, when you don't know for sure when they're one or the other? And if you have chicks, you're going to have 50% roosters, so at that point, you have to get rid of them.
I guess...
But never go with that, let's just put it that way.
Sure.
Not just saying that I know what you're saying with roosters, but it makes it difficult.
You know, once again, no, like we're talking about Class III animals, so technically, the code enforcer could step in on other animals and say, you have too many, or the animal doesn't comply with where you're at, so that basically...
Is a male goose a rooster too?
Well, I guess, I guess my concern would be is that, I understand what you're saying, you don't know when the rooster come, you know, nobody knows when they buy and all that, as long as there's the effective punish, well, I wouldn't say punishment, the enforcement would be is you can't have it. It's not like you're going to be fined, it's not like you're going to be punished, it's going to be, okay, you've been told you can't have the rooster because you don't meet the requirements of where you're at. I mean, you know, it is punishment to some degree, but it's at least that it's not financial, you're not forcing them to stop having chickens or anything else, so, you know. As long as you don't have a mechanism for punishing them for having them, you know...
They just have to go, well, they'd have to get rid of it.
But if they say no?
Then they would get punished.
Then they would get punished.
Then it is punishment, so...
Well, but the reality is, you're not going to know, to answer Glenn's question, at least to my thinking, it becomes a rooster the day somebody complains about it, because it means nobody's going to go running around.
That's true, it's, you know, if you can somehow keep your rooster under control, but...
Yeah.
Well, what I meant about punishment, the way I was looking at it is that you're not sitting there and saying, you, you know, you're in great, okay, you have an issue here, you need to deal with it. Most people are raising their chickens for eggs, I would assume that you find that in most of your places, you know, on small lots and that, or meat chickens and that, you know, if the rooster doesn't fit that category, people aren't going to want to keep it anyways, that would be my thing, you know, in the general course of thing. Now, like I said at previous meeting, I came across someone who I've known for years, all of a sudden, make a rooster their pet, and I'm like, that's beyond me why you would want to live in Roseville with a rooster as your pet, but they have done that, so I mean, you can, I think, you know, we've been told this before, you can only cover so many things, and there's always going to be something that could pop up, so you try to just get the best you can and hope... try to just get the best you can and hope for the best on that.
But you're finding in most places, smaller parcels exclude roosters?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, it's not, not that we would be doing something that's out of the ordinary in any way, if we went, if we went in that direction?
So, if we're allowing 10 class three animals, that's a combination of chickens, rabbits, whatever, class three animals.
If it's in that category.
I still found the listing of things that we were, it's over the line, all over the board, so I don't know how you're picking one thing and saying that's what most people do. Everybody had different, I don't, just everything there was different, you know, they all had a different idea.
You had 125 chickens on the acre, some of those spots.
Yep.
That's to make a lot of chickens.
Depending how you caged them, you might notice there's more than one.
Yeah, true.
That's the issue, if you're maintaining properly, I don't think the number of chickens is a big issue, it's how you're maintaining them, whether it's bothering other people around them, it's a nuisance. And that's what I thought we should be doing, is to determine whether it's a nuisance or not. Because we can sit and figure out whether it's one chicken or 10 chickens for a long time, debate whether, how many is too many. Because it's not necessarily lot sizes, how the people are maintaining the chickens, how they're housed, how they're taken care of, kind of thing, is more the issue. Because chickens, commercial, you know, not that I want to give that, but commercial, they have probably 10,000 chickens on not much more than acre-sized buildings, I say that's right, but the number isn't so much the issue, it's how they're...
And again, you know, I offer this for your consideration. It's got to be right for you guys, you know, we put together, you know, I didn't filter this information, you know, it's, like you said, it's pretty, pretty wide open.
I thought we were close last meeting to agreeing to kind of limit it open, revisit it later if there's a problem.
Well, so, well, here's the thing, if we, if we go in the direction of a general ordinance, and let's say we go with kind of what you're talking about and not having any limits, a year from now, we revisit it and realize, oops, that was a mistake. If it's a general ordinance, and then we, at that point, I guess the board would be the ones adjusting it, then there's a mechanism to bring those people who have gone overboard into compliance. Now, we would, the person causing the offense would still be able to perpetually do so. So, all it, all it does is, it gives us the ability to, if needed, put the toothpaste back in the tube.
But that's not all it's doing, because now we're talking about numbers and we're talking about roosters again, when we were not talking about that at the last meeting because we...
Well, it's two, it's two different, it's two different things. We're talking about where this needs to go, and then John has brought forth, based on the information that he's been, his research, so it's two different, it's two different questions.
So, review the why it's better to have it not in the zoning and in the ordinance, I missed, it's police for toll.
It's because if it's in the zoning ordinance and someone establishes a use with chickens that becomes a problem, it's, it's non-conforming. So, they're allowed to continue that in perpetuity.
Even if they're considered nuisance?
They would have to try to address the nuisance, whatever that nuisance was, but you couldn't make them get rid of their chickens.
But if it, if it's a nuisance issue, it still would be, and it could be dealt with that one, correct?
Sure, but what I found in years of dealing with those kinds of situations, they're perpetual. If there's a nuisance issue today, it's likely to continue on, and it's going to be a continuous enforcement issue, na, 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 na.
Well, I know too, part of it was also with like the sale of a property. So, if we put it in the zoning, the zoning ordinance, one of the things that I found was very interesting, was that if the property changes hands, so it would be grandfathered in, it's still, they still can do it for an indefinite amount of time. And that's what, I think that's what, when putting it in the general ordinance, we were trying to prevent it, if we are going to do this one-year review, if we determine at that one-year review that we need to make a change, we would be unable, we could do that, but there will, there would be nothing we could do retroactively, not retroactively, but we wouldn't be able to change it. So, the, I think what they were trying to do with the general ordinance is, my understanding, is that that would allow us to make amendments and in turn, execute whatever that decision was, because of the grandfathering.
Give people six months to come into compliance.
Exactly, so, and I think that's why they were, why we were steering away from the zoning ordinance in particular, that was my understanding.
That's, that was part of mine, and plus, as I went through it, it was, we're not, when it comes down to it, we're not really, this ordinance has not much to do with zoning, we're basically saying, everywhere in the township, for the most part, we're opening it up for chickens. So, it's not a zoning issue anymore.
And, and I think it's a great idea for the general, to put it in the general ordinance, I think where my hesitation is, is that we're back talking about this stuff again.
The numbers, the numbers.
Yeah, that's where I'm kind of like, okay, now we're, and I understand your, I understand full disclosure, and you want to make sure you're providing us with all the information, I definitely appreciate that due diligence, it's just, that's where I'm kind of...
Yeah, I mean, I was all ready to go along with it, then when the whole grandfather thing came in, I thought, like, you know, it's been explained, that worried me, because then it's like, if we do have, you know, if the numbers are the issue, and we set a number, you know, that, you know, then we're stuck with that number if we kept it the way it was, as a zoning. Because then they could just say, okay, I had 100, when you guys put it in, I can continue having 100, for, you know, the next person on the property, continue having 100, and that, that worried me, you know, that. But I understand, you know, what Glenn's saying about how, you know, if they're maintained properly, you never know they're there, but on the other hand, too, I just see if we don't put some kind of limit on it, you're just going to have people push it. And the thing is, it's not the people who follow the rules that you worry about, it's the ones that are breaking them, or are going to push the limits on it. Some of the smaller lots, that, I don't know, like I said, I, to some degree, when we say about the wink, wink about the roosters, not a problem until someone complains or there's an issue with it. You know, in all reality, we're kind of the same thing with the chickens, you know, until there's an issue with it, nobody's going to know really, because we're not going to have our code enforcers, not going to be counting off chickens.
Nobody's going to be out counting, no, no.
And when it does become a problem, I mean, I hate to say it, but we might be making a rule that, for the most part, until there's an issue, we're not going to really be enforcing. Think about it, I mean, yeah, we're not, we're not going to go to a house and say, you got 100 chickens, you know, unless there's a complaint, there's 100 chickens.
So, here, so here's, here, this is, this is...
On the other side, we're doing limitations on, it's kind of like if you have a, let's say you have a parent and they have four children, and we put that you have this many chickens and a couple of them aren't laying, now they're not able to provide for their family because they don't have enough chickens. So, it's kind of like we can, I, we can spin it a couple of different ways, I think that's what makes it a difficult issue to discuss, so...
Well, so, so here's where, putting this in the general ordinance, to me, is a compromise. I am someone who thinks we should be putting limits on numbers, and I don't think we should be allowing roosters in small parcels. It seems to me the general consensus of this board is to go in a different direction than that. So, if that's the case, and we put it as a general ordinance, a year from now, when the review happens, if we realize that numbers need to be put up, there is a mechanism to actually enforce that change. Whereas, if we go the way, what seems to be the consensus of the board and keep it as a zoning ordinance, a year from now, we can say, oh, no, what did we do, and the bottom line is, we're kind of stuck with it.
I don't think it's consensus that it's in the zoning, I think you just...
No, 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 I'm saying the consensus as far as not putting number limits and trying to allow roosters.
What would prevent us a year to not, to make it a code, or in the, change it to out of the zoning in a year from now?
You could, but what, what it would be the harm in doing it, just doing that and putting it there to begin with? It's, it's the same ordinance, it's just, at the end of the day, it's how it's enforced.
We want numbers and we don't...
No, 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 I'm saying, I'm saying, I will, I will acquiesce, I will acquiesce to the consensus of the board as far as taking out the numbers out of it, but let's make it a general ordinance, that way, if it turns out doing so was a mistake, we can put the toothpaste back in the tube.
I guess maybe another thing, we deal with other animals in, I don't, it might be fine what you're saying, but we're dealing with other classes of animals in the zoning, correct?
No, right, this is just...
We have class one, we have class two.
Class one, class two would remain in the zoning ordinance.
They're in the zoning ordinance, okay.
So, that's why it seems you would continue with class three, but that's, it may not, it doesn't need to be, I guess, but it just seemed like, if you have animals one and two, we'd continue with it.
Well, we certainly could look at it, at moving it. Now, you're opening up, you're opening up a new, say...
Well, let's stop those can of worms from being opened right now. How about, how about we go on with Tony's suggestion, because no limit, put it in a, with the...
He doesn't want to be tied to that suggestion.
No, I, that's, my, I, I sat up at night trying to figure out a way of compromise so I could sleep well at night, and that the consensus of the board could, could carry the day.
But was there a rooster crowing next year that you...
He's in the village, isn't he?
Right.
I tend, I'll go with that myself, I think that's reasonable, I mean, and if in a year's time, we're having no issues, then we have no limit, we don't have to change anything. We have problems, our code enforcer's going to tell us, we got a problem, you know, I think that's fair enough.
I don't have a problem with that, John, does it make sense to put different parts of animals in different places?
Yeah, other communities do it that way too, that's, yeah, that's a good enough for me.
So, we don't have the actual ordinance in front of us, so I'm not comfortable in making a motion tonight.
No.
Without seeing it, so I guess at this point...
Well, we would just be signing the public hearing, right?
Well, do we have to set another, we don't have...
Yeah, because you're going to be taking...
All right, you know what, so let's do that.
I'd want another public hearing.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Stacy to set a public hearing for our March 5, 2019 meeting.
Okay.
We have a support by AC, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, very good. Okay, moving on to new business, item number one, our 2019 work plan.
So, we prepared a report, and it listed a number of projects in the report, and we thought this was a good time to do it before the township gets into their budget process so that we can get some of our priorities out there. And so, I'm interested to hear from you, what you, how you feel about those projects. A number of the projects obviously have come up just based on current issues that have confronted, confronted the township, but also from the master plan, especially with respect to, you know, the northeast part of the township, looking at that as a way to generate some economic development activity, trying to capitalize on some of the momentum that's going on up in that area, now would be a good time to do that. But like I said, I'm curious to hear what your, what your input is on those.
I think it is very well done, and based on what we discussed last year and what our objectives were and where we plan on going this year, I think it's very clear and concise. I think to add more would be a challenge to get it done.
We'll see what sticks now, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
The only thing I would add, only because it's just come up now, is addressing projects like the Fish Lake, this farm stand, because maybe, who knows, maybe we'll get some more in other areas, and how, how do we bring them into compliance?
So, so, in the, in the information that you receive, you can see there's a, one of the sub-area plans from the master plan was included, and this was, you know, the area up in the northeast part of the township. There's another sub-area that's included in the master plan, and that's the Fish Lake Grinch Hall Road intersection. So, we could add that to, add that to the program and submit that to the township board if you're so inclined.
Now, we had three commercial areas, and we're changing the name of it, is that what we're doing? To Enterprise and Recreation District?
That, that's the name of the sub-area, what exact zoning designations come out of that, you know, we'll have to see once we start exploring it and seeing what, what we want to achieve there, what mix of uses we want to, what we want to accomplish, you know, what we think the market will support in that area, we'll, we'll have to figure that out once we get into it.
Any other questions, comments?
I like the idea of adding the Fish Lake area to that, I think that's, I think that's a great idea. That is an area that I live close to, and there's definitely been more commercial activity in that area. Now, it's been some have come and gone, but it definitely, you're seeing movement, so I think that focusing on that and maybe doing a concentrated effort in that area is a good idea.
And, and when we get into these sub-areas, we're going to be looking at more than just the zoning, we're going to be looking at what other incentives that we can put in place, we're going to be looking at what kind of procedural incentives, you know, sort of a lean zoning approach, how can we remove barriers to development, how can we get people in, especially sort of these entrepreneurial uses, people that, you know, may not have deep pockets, how can we get them in and get them going?
When I saw down on here, they created park and public space standards on that, that would be something I think we might encourage some input from our Parks Board, you know, have some, you know, inform them of what we're doing so we can get some input from them.
I was, I was actually just saying here, thinking that it would be nice if we, in some of these key areas, if we could put some type of, this is what the township's doing, like get our name out there more, because you're starting to see the villages coming up more, but it, I'd like to see the township as well.
Any other questions, comments?
I think the wireless communication we need to address, it's obviously a growing business, very fast, and there's got to be some issues there that we need to address before they're dropped on our head.
Yeah, but it's constantly changing too, so, yeah.
I think the Renaissance Festival is just a continual thing to keep an eye on for sure.
Right, yeah. So, do we need a motion to send this, recommend sending this to the township board?
Yep, I would, I would request a motion to send the, the report with the achievements of the planning commission over the last year, along with the 2019 work plan, to the township board.
I will make a motion to send the 2018 achievements and 2019 work plan to the board for approval, this would be what we're doing.
We're going to add the Fish Lake Grinch Hall Road area to that?
Yeah.
As amended.
Yeah, that'd be great.
As amended.
Is that support Lloyd?
Yes, that's...
Okay. So, we have a motion by Stacy, a support by Lloyd, to send this up to the township board for their endorsement and approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Hearing none, motion carries, yes, thank you.
That was very...
Sorry you didn't get to present it to us up there.
Bet you did a good job.
Yeah.
I tried.
All right, moving on to reports. AC, I'll start with you this time.
Yeah.
Okay. Pat?
Well, the only thing that got good news is our wind ordinance passed the board at our last meeting, so, other than that, don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Lloyd?
Nothing.
Glenn?
Well, nothing much, I just thought we should be cognizant of, I assume we're paying money every time we send this chicken stuff back to our planner, because it takes time to deal with this, so we should be kind of conscious how much it's costing the township, and I've never heard how much we pay the fees and how much it is for some of this.
Probably not enough.
He would say that.
Yeah, his boss would say that.
So, anyway, I think we should be looking at that a little bit, and some of this time when we send it back and ask for more detail on that, is how much is it going to cost us to really cost-effectively do some of these things.
I don't think we're asking for more detail, though, we're moving to the general ordinance and then moving, no, but I mean, I think we're setting it for a public hearing and just moving into the...
But I'm saying, we've already spent three meetings or four meetings on this topic, and each time now it's costing us money, where before, I think it was going to be just a general thing that we're going to pass and go on.
Right?
I actually had the same thoughts, I don't mean anything bad, but, I mean, that was, I'd actually questioned a few people about that, of what this, but, I mean...
You want to do it right, but...
Yes, I would agree, I would, yeah, that, that's it.
Stacy?
Not paying up this time.
Okay. You know, my only comment on that is, I... You know, my only comment on that is, I, I am someone who does not like typically when a board or a council or, you know, whatever would rubber stamp stuff too quickly, I've seen that happen too much, and then it comes back to bite you, and people then, the more due diligence we do, and I, I respect what you guys are saying as far as let's make sure we're not overkilling, but I'd rather err on the side of due diligence than let something slip through, and then the public comes back at us and says, you know, why don't you, why didn't you do it this way? Now, granted, in some cases, they're going to do that anyway, but certainly, once, however this ends up going, and I think, I think the way this is looking after the public hearing, we should be in good shape, nobody's going to say we did not put a decent amount of time and thought into, into this. So, and as I always say, I appreciate the hard work that all of you put into everything that we do here, so. Beyond that, I don't have anything else today, which might be shocking for some. So, we will move on to public comment, this is for anything. And once again, members can address the board for a maximum of three minutes, an additional three minutes can be allotted with board approval. Members of the public who want to step up can do so, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'd like to say, first of all, John Jackson.
Yeah, you're okay.
First of all, my name is Sherri Billington. I live, I have to give my address? 3300 Quick Road. And I'd like to say, first of all, John Jackson, I think you are doing a wonderful job. You're taking your job seriously, you are thoroughly checking things out, and I do agree with you, there should be some sort of limit. That's why we have speed limits, that's why we have boundaries. That's why mom says only one piece of candy and not a whole handful. If you don't put limits, then there is going to be abuse, nobody's looking, somebody is going to try and pull a fast one. And if I may, ask Mr. Glenn Mitchell, you seem to be a chicken man. How many chickens do you have?
Ma'am, unfortunately, this is not.
Okay, I can ask, okay, all right. All right, so I'm going to assume, I am going to assume, this is my opinion, that Mr. Glenn Mitchell has an abundance of chickens. I don't know what size lot, property he owns or houses these chickens. How many chickens do you need, how many eggs can you eat? If you've got a hundred chickens on a half an acre and your neighbors don't complain, great, you got some awesome neighbors. If you live on a acre property and your neighbors have got a dozen chickens and they drive you nuts, that's not so great. There needs to be limits. We have limits in schools, we have limits in courts, we have limits everywhere. There needs to be some sort of number, or we'll be abused, that is my opinion. Second, I would like to ask, since the people do not have any of your work plans or things that you're going to do, is there an urgent care in your work plans, in your agenda, for the township? It would be really nice if we are a playful city and everybody knows, you're always going to fall down and scrape your knee. An urgent care, we've got a number of empty vacant buildings that would make a great place for an urgent care, specifically right next to McDonald's, the old used car lot, that would make a nice little area for little offices for walk-in urgent cares so you don't have to go to Fenton or Grand Blank or another city. Why can we not have an urgent care in our own?
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
I will just address a couple of things, just as a point of information. The areas you're speaking about, and this won't be a back and forth, but just so you know, that, that is Village, that's not us. The area McDonald's, the car, the used car dealership, that's, that's, that's in the Village limits. So, that's a completely separate. As a general rule, planning commissions do not go out and actively recruit businesses. That's not, that's not within our purview. The Village has the Downtown Development Authority and a Chamber of Commerce that the taxpayers fund, and they, and the chamber does some fundraising as well. Those are more business recruitment, business growth entities, that is not, that is not within the purview. Now, it doesn't mean we can't as private people go out and talk to, but that's not what our responsibilities fall under. So.
I'm going to mention to her about what we're looking at doing at the edge of North Holly Road.
Go ahead.
So, we, I mentioned we have three commercial areas that we're looking at, and we do have an area, North Holly Road going towards Grand Blank, where the focus is on the medical field, so that could be something where there's a current, maybe, you live with, you know, being in the future, so, yeah, those are things to think about.
Anybody else for public comment? Sure.
I just want to know the comment on, I know I got to give my naming address. Please. Okay, fine. Neil Billington, 3300 Quick Road. My question is, when you're talking about public comments for the, the voting or two people talking, discussing, is that going, how's that going to be publicized? When you notify everybody on it? You're going to have a public hearing, correct, you said?
Okay, again, typically, this is not a back and forth, but just, I'll answer your question, what exactly do you mean?
By publicizing it, to let everybody else know about it.
Oh, you're talking as far as, there, there are standards, like legal standards that we have to do, we'll have to publish the meeting, I mean, the public hearing is going to be at our next meeting.
Oh, okay.
And that'll take place right after the first public comment.
Okay.
And so, at that point in time, anybody who wants to talk about chickens, or our ordinance, are free to come up, and that's.
All right, thanks very much.
Anybody else?
Stacy Taylor, 15566 Falk Road. Two seconds on the chickens, it's a pretty rural community. I don't want, and I think somebody can say you can have this many cats, or you can have this many dogs, or you can have this many children, because your 12 children are running around crazy. I get that you have to make some rules, but it is a pretty rural community, and my neighbors had roosters, and I actually enjoyed it. Now, don't get me wrong, they were a little bit away and they had 11 acres, but I would hate to say, somebody say you can't have that many beehives, or you can't have, you know, whatever the circumstances. Okay, beyond all that, I really wanted to read a bunch of this to you tonight on the dump, but I decided, instead of reading it specifically, I'm going to hand you each a packet, and I want, I hope that you have the time to review it and read all of it, because if you read it and you read it the way I read it, especially the last page of the last document, there's some really big concerns that are maybe a little bigger than what we all realize and is going on here. So, it's going to be Barbara Renish's, Joan Kelso, the DEQ, and the results in the study on the dump. Perhaps next time, I will read a little bit more, I don't want to get into all that right now, tonight, without you having a chance to review some of this, but I, I hope that you can see what I'm saying, and perhaps we can make sure that everything is done with safety and health of the citizens in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I killed a tree to save a hundred.
Thank you.
I have one more, I'll bring it right up.
I'm assuming, just for the purposes of the record, if the township doesn't have, do you guys have, okay, I'll provide mine, and then you guys can give it back to me. Stacy, do you have a second, another one? Because technically, anything given to us as a board needs to also go to them, I'll give them my copy for now.
And I'll get you one.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you could scan it and just email to us, we'd be okay.
Yeah, there's about 25 pages here, it looks like. Okay. Anybody else for public comment?
George Collet, 601 East Maple Street. I just wanted to make a comment on the beginning part of your meeting. Just so that you're aware, both through your commission and our board, Courtney does the minutes for those. The standards on minutes just require notation of when the meeting opened, when it closed, what your motions are. That's the purpose of recording minutes. We tend to go over on different boards and give a little more information. If you've got something important that you want to be on the record, it always helps to let her know when you start out and say, I want to make this mention for the record. It can be put on there. The other thing I was going to mention, you get your minutes early, your packets early. If you see some problems with the minutes and you contact the office, those can be fixed before we get here, that'll save you some time, they can be corrected. You made the comment, you just got yours this morning. I took those to the post office myself last Tuesday, but let's remember, Wednesday and Thursday, there was no postal delivery, so who knows where, when, or what happened to it. But I do know it was out like a week earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but it was just, just to help you keep the meeting moving, you, and I know we've got a couple of new members, you can call the office with those corrections, they can get effective. And what will happen is she'll come into the meeting and she'll pass out the amended minutes, and then it's quicker for an approval.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? If, if there are amended minutes, or is it possible for us to get a copy? I guess with what George is saying, that if we're going to be handed amended minutes, I'd like to review it before. So, if it's like we're going to release them, can we just get an email copy? Because that's, I always review everything in email.
It's just, it's just a matter of when they come out.
Okay, all right, cool.
If she's amending them at three in the afternoon?
Then no. Yeah, yeah, no, that makes sense, so, okay.
Anybody else? Angela? No? All right. Hearing none, we will adjourn this meeting at 7:34. Thank you, everybody.